I'd like to call the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order a regular business meeting Thursday, February 2nd, 2017 at 7:00.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor V. Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Luffley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner's absent this evening as well as City Manager Lovin'.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Turner and the City Manager.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
They were scheduled.
Communications. I need a motion to accept and file communications from pending agenda items, the 216 stormwater permit program, and a letter from Fine Arts Models.
So moved.
I make a motion to accept the communications.
We did receive a letter from, I do have one statement on it, we did receive a letter from Fine Arts Models in regard to accepting other non-residents or business owners into the lower boards, and it's something we can look at, but at this time, due to the fact that we would have to do a vote and change the charter, but if we do, it'd be something that we can look into when we do maybe changes to the charter as an addition to those changes, so.
I've got some comments and tweets. Chris, would it be okay that that appears on our pending agenda items so we can have conversation about that at a future meeting?
Yeah.
So we can chat through that. And then, just for folks following along, and the audience who are at home, part of the communications that we received was from the county. It included the 2016 stormwater permit for the stormwater program that they've been coordinating for years now, and they required to give it out to everyone in the county, all the municipalities, but they actually commented on something I thought was very notable for us, and their update notes within that, and it was a multi-page document, that indicated that there were significant beach health improvements in the Marine City beach and Chrysler beaches in particular. You know, they talked about all the waterways, but those are the two that they mentioned very specifically that had overall improvements since the last report. I believe that was over a two- or a four-year period, so I thought that was, you know, an indication that, you know, people are doing good things and that we're moving in the right direction for as many people that use our beach. It was nice to hear that, you know, we're seeing data that supports a healthier beach for us directly, and that's a great thing.
Anything else? Can I get, all in favor of accepting and filing communications?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Down to public comment. Residents are welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and limit the comments to five minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Charles Signory, 224 North Elizabeth, City Council members, City Attorney. I'm here tonight to a couple of different things. I would like to reach out to the community, I guess, and let you guys know, I think you're all doing a fine job. I think that there's a lot to get moving this year. It's a new board members and different things, but it's not up to you seven to make the changes. It's up to the city residents to stand up and be heard. And some of the things that we have at these meetings are the same people over and over. We had people running for election, people who wanted to be on the board, including myself, who would have stepped up, and I'm going to make a commitment tonight to the city and the people here that we make a change, that we step up, volunteer, because that's all these people are doing. They're volunteers. They get a $15 stipend, I think, something to that, and the City Manager may get a little bit more, but by the time they look over their paperwork throughout the week, do all their stuff on their computers, they're working for nothing. And a lot of the other board members are all volunteers also throughout the different boards, and I just ask that, you know, they can't make the changes themselves. It's something that we, as citizens, have to make. We have to step up, and not always be negative, but there's times that we need to be stern and stand our ground. But also, let's try to be positive, step out of the box, think out of the box, come up with ways to raise money, funding for sidewalks, different things that need to be done. I believe that the Chamber of Commerce, area chamber here, does a lot for our city businesses and for our city, but we've got to get into the neighborhoods. And I'd like us to see neighborhood groups come together, be formed. I'd like to see the Police Department. I've said it numerous times, look into an area authority. I'd like the Fire Department, who does a great job. There's a lot of things we need to do. I don't have the answers, but I think if we all come together, instead of bickering and fighting one another, that we could all try and accomplish something. And you're going to hear more from me, because I'm not going to back down on this. It's something I think we really need to do as a community. I hope you all step up and help us out. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Just because I'm not in the saddle anymore doesn't mean I can't be involved with the As a public servant, but as a citizen, I'm looking out for my neighbors. And a lot of things that, you know, as a benchmark, you think about other communities like the sidewalk programs, and other cities, they just say, "It's a done deal, got to replace the sidewalks," and it goes on your taxes. Well, there's a lot of people that can't afford it. And I talked with my neighbor Chuck about, we were talking about sidewalks, and my heart goes out, because I don't like to see people losing their homes, or can't afford it, and being depressed and lose hope. Without hope, you don't care anymore. And to me, a real public servant, I want to serve. And this afternoon, I was talking to Gary, and I said, "You know, the sidewalk program, you're a motivator, and you seem to have control on programs." And he said a key word to me, "Private innovation." In other words, dollar for dollar, in other words, matching dollars. This have a fundraiser, people put forward and making it a possibility so the less fortunates cannot afford the sidewalks, but getting the sidewalks done without putting a burden on the citizens. It's fine that we want to help out the commercial properties and helping them out, giving them grants and doing different things, but we, as the citizens, sometimes we need a helping hand, too. And if you're blessed and you've got the finances, you're going to take care of it, and it's not going to be a problem to you. But 40% of our town don't have, they're in poverty, and they don't have the finances. And I want to see, as a benchmark, our community to come together. And I appreciate Gary and the audience, he's a motivator. You want to get something done? I'm not interested in applying for grants, and then you get the government involvement, but we, as the people, we can stand up, and I'd like to put a program together and be a true public servant, even though I'm not in the saddle, but just like Chuck said, we the people, we can dictate, and if we disagree what some of the board, what you guys might pass, we can petition and block it and stand with our votes, and we can stop it if something is not agreeing with us. But I'm thinking that, let's see what we can do to help out the people. And our town, it's a very giving town. I'm involved in different clubs and organizations, and I found out, when there's a need, people do give out, and I'm impressed of being involved with the Old Newsboys, the Lions Club, I mean, I could just go on. When you're involved with the people, these are the real people in our town. If you don't want to get involved in clubs or anything, well, you'll never be, you'll always be a newbie, but you want to get involved in our town, become into our town, you won't be a newbie anymore when you start mixing with the people. But I also feel, you give, it comes back. This year, I was blessed with a lot of work. I'm a handyman, and I've been blessed with a lot of work, and things have been going great for me. But there's a timing to everything. But when you have support of the people, and you have support of the town, I don't know if you guys want to make a weekend or a fundraising ordeal, or want to get with Gary, or something to organize it, but I feel as though, if we can help out with the people with the sidewalk product, and also any extra money that is received from it, it stays in the sidewalk fund. It does not go back to the city for you guys to use it for something else. That is a stipulation that I would insist on, that what money goes in, goes to that program, and it could stay in that program and not be spread around elsewhere, because if you do that, then who's going to respond in giving money to the sidewalk funds if somebody takes it and uses it for something else? That's not what the people want it for. And I feel as though, we are all neighbors. We're a small town, and if you don't want to be a neighbor, then get out of our town. That's the way I look at it, and if you're involved in our town, we can have a benchmark, we can make our town whatever we want. If we want to make our town like a lower, okay, I was just going to say one more word, if we want to make our town like a Mackinaw, we can do it. If we want to make a benchmark to that, we can do it. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Erica Delang, Executive Director, Marine City Area Chamber, and I'm just here to share with all of you who we chose to be our 2016 Volunteer of the Year. It was a very great accomplishment for this person, Erin Dosh. We gave it to her at our gala, our recognition gala, and just, I know a lot of you saw everything she did last year. She joined three of our committees for Pumpkin Popcorn Politics, The Beach, and Maritime Christmas, and she's just a wonderful asset to our community, and with her online Facebook campaigns that she did for the Life Rings downtown and the Cancer Totes, she has some other things coming up, so be aware that she has some other things flying around in her head that she wants to raise money for. But I just wanted, in a public forum, thank her again for all of her volunteerism and just give her a little more recognition, because she is a great asset to our community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Laura Scotia from 430 South Water Street. Just a little update, because some people think that we've gone AWOL. We are actually trying to, you know, catch up on our real work that we need to do, but just a heads up on River Rec Teen Zone, we are still meeting, we are moving forward. There's some exciting things coming down the pike, so I just want you to all know that it's not forgotten. We're still working with the kids and meeting with our committee, so hopefully by next meeting, hopefully Kyle Pond and some of the other kids will be here to give you an update on what's going on, but I just wanted to give everybody kind of a heads up that we're still alive, okay? Thank you.
Gary Coes, 430 South Water Street. I'm just here to say that we figure, if you announce it soon enough, we can get enough volunteers, and we don't have to do all the work ourselves, so it's self-serving. We are going to sponsor the first annual Slow Cycle Paddle Weekend in Marine City, and it's going to be international, and we, I don't want, well, I won't tell you what I was going to tell you, but anyway, we have this all set up, and it's for people like you, Mr. Mayor, who don't know how to ride a 10-speed, but might be able to get on a Schwinn. And if you know how to ride a bicycle, that is, but you'll have to learn how to ride one by then. So consequently, is, we expect, quite frankly, hundreds of bicyclists and paddlers to come to Marine City on June 3rd and 4th, and we're going to invite all the volunteers we can find. Furthermore, we just want to share the fact that, as the Mariner, we're going to sponsor this event. It's international, we have the Ontario Bicycle Association already on board, we have Walpool Island that is going to cooperate with us, because that'll be the destination when people go across the ferry and then come back to Marine City. So it's going to be a pretty exciting weekend, and it's going to be, it's going to fill the city with, really, some great people. So that's the one thing we're doing. The other thing we're going to sponsor, of course, is Comic-Con, because that's fun, and with Dan Mykoff involved, it's going to be more than fun, it's going to be nuts. So, and that's great fun. We're working very seriously on the first international film festival for Marine City, and that's going unbelievably good. Thirty films in 10 days, and it's going to be a pretty exciting thing. We don't have the dates yet, it's all going to be depending on some of the directors that we're going to be able to attract to come to town. So having said that, this weekend, we are showing the documentary, Iwo Jima Diary, and I have to tell you, it's going to be one of the most powerful evenings ever in this city, or any city, for that matter. We announced the show for Friday and was sold out, then we, or Saturday, it was sold out, then we put a show on for Sunday, it's sold out. So we put another show on for 1 o'clock on Sunday, and it appears it's going to be sold out. Well, the irony of this whole story is, if you saw the Times Herald today, Harold Daniels, who's a local resident, was at Iwo Jima. And all this came about one Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month, these guys, the elders of Marine City meet at the Mariner, and we buy them coffee and donuts, and we're talking about this diary, which is phenomenal diary, this documentary, and we're going to have the producer of the documentary present. It is, it's one of the most powerful documentaries I've ever seen in my life. And I'm telling these guys about this documentary, and Harold goes, "Well, you know, I was there on the first wave." And everyone just stopped and looked at him and said, "What? Yeah, I was in the first wave at Iwo Jima. I was on a ship landing tanks." Well, he started to share some of his stories, and I said, "Have you ever talked about this?" And as, and over the years, I've realized that a lot of these guys have never talked about it, they don't want to talk about it. And now, he said, "I never talked about it, my family doesn't even know." And I said, "Would you be willing to talk about it?" He said, "I have to think about that, I'll let you know next week." And so he came back the following Tuesday, and he said, "You know, I think it's time, I think it's time I talk about it." So his stories, plus this documentary, all I can tell you is, there are some seats still left for Sunday at 1:30, and it's going to be an event that no one will ever forget. That's, I can tell you that right now. No one will ever forget this, it's that powerful. And if you ever wanted to appreciate this country and what people gave up for this country, there's no better way to experience it than listening to these guys. It's pretty powerful. So you're all welcome, and then, and that's why I'm really here tonight, is to emphasize that it is, it's huge, it really is huge. So thank you, and I hope we'll see you. And we got training wheels for you, Mr. Mayor, if you need them, okay?
Anyone else like to speak?
Michael Frank, 218 Pleasant Street. It basically outlines the sale or partnership of Visioneering, Inc., which is owned by our hotel developers. It was sold back in 2007 for just under $20 million. So, you know, Ms. Hendrick made a comment that there was a concerned citizen that, you know, should look into, we should look into their finances before approving a loan increase on the hotel. So I figured, you know, why don't just do that research? And so that's what I did. And yeah, as you can see, these people have got plenty of money. They got, they got money, more money than probably most, everybody combined in this room, except maybe Mr. Coes over there, but...
No, no, they get more, they get more.
Okay. Anyways, so yeah, I just want to remind this commission what we've given them already. We've already given them $150,000 in grant writing services, we've already given them a 50% 12-year tax abatement, we've already given them $167,000 in loans, and to give them another $113,000 is just, it's ridiculous. They have their own money, they don't need this money from us. They want to do it is because they can pay back the loan with the incremental taxes, which means, if you have your mortgage on your house, you can pay, you would be able to pay your mortgage with your tax bill. Wouldn't we all love to do that? That'd be awesome. That's what they're trying to do with this. And these are people that are worth multi-millions of dollars, and that's crazy. All right, on to the next thing. This whole Fine Arts Model correspondence, and I'll just leave it, we'll call him Mr. C., requesting to change the charter, this is crazy. This guy should not be anywhere near these boards, he's caused nothing but chaos for St. Clair, the city of St. Clair. As you can see in the Voice article here, St. Clair Police Department challenges Mr. C.'s story of truck deer accident. Mr. C. claimed that he has conducted private speed studies and threatened to sue the city and force its speed limits. He's been nothing but problems for that city up there, and to allow him to even consider that request is ludicrous, and I'll leave it at that. But what else, on a more positive note, what you have in front of you, this Seriously Program, it's a program out in Chelsea, Michigan. It's a community-oriented program for at-risk youth. It's, you know, it helps with kids that are struggling with substance abuse, and it's a really good program that gets, you know, the entire community involved. It's something that, you know, rather than punish kids for things, it creates a system of positive reinforcement and gets the whole community involved. Like I said, there's really cool events they do, they have movies, outside movies they do every week, and it's just something to kind of get the community involved in more eyes and more attention to the kids, so they don't get lost in the cracks, you know, don't get lost to drug influence and lost to, you know, the temptations that are really facing our kids today. And I think this is, this would be awesome for us to look into, and I think it's something, you know, we have a bunch of business members in this community that are, you know, willing to give a lot and are willing to participate in a lot of different things. So I think this is something we should really look into, and if this commission would be, you know, receptive, I would love to touch base with people in the community, business members, and put together a formal-type presentation on it, and get back to you guys in, I don't know, two, three months or so, depending on what kind of reception I get. And that's all I got.
Anyone else? All right, moving on then. I need a motion to approve agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Any, okay. Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Also need to approve, a motion to approve minutes from the City Commission regular, regular meeting, January 19th, 2017.
I move to approve the minutes from the City Commission meeting of January 19th, 2017.
Support.
Folks, point order, please. Did we get support on?
Motion is supported.
Okay. And we have to do these separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then you need another motion for the City Commission closed session meeting at January 19th, 2017.
I move to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes from January 19th, 2017, as presented.
Support.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. I'm going to need a roll call vote, or a motion for sewer rate computation for Cotterville Township year ending January 30th, 2016. You can do them all together? Okay. Sewer rate computation estimates for Cotterville Township year ending January 30th, 2017. Historical commission meetings, April 19th, 2016. Planning commission meetings, November 14th, December 2016. Historical commission special meeting minutes, November 28th, 2016. Tifa minutes, December 20th, 2016.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry, roll call vote. On my note.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Turner's in the audience.
Yes. All right, we're up to unfinished business with the Titanic Memorial update.
I'm Gary Coes from 430 South Water. We're here for the Titanic Memorial, just to give you an update, we've got a couple new commissioners. James, you want to start us off?
Sure. James Lovlan, East China Township, Secretary of the Great Lakes Titanic Connection, and wanted to give you all an update on the progress of our, of our group. We are, first, we're closing in on about $2,000 worth of donations, and we are, we're also being, Marine City will be discussed at the Titanic International Symposium in New Jersey, it's a convention, and as a possible meeting place for the Titanic International Society's 2020 International Convention. We're going to need a hotel, I think, if we get this, but that's hopefully. Article to be included in the Titanic International Society publication, The Voyage, which is distributed worldwide, which will mention us and Marine City. On the 1st of April, we will, we'll be doing a fundraiser with the Mariner Theater, Night to Remember with O'Durds, and tickets are $25. So we, we hope everyone in the commission will join us, and everybody in the city will join us, everybody here will join us. April 8th, we are going on a speaking engagement up to Petoskey, and we'll be at the Stratford Perry Hotel, and after the Titanic dinner at the Stratford, which is a six-course meal, by the way, you're all welcome, we are going to be showcasing Marine City. And then again in April, on the 20th, we will be speaking at the Sloan Museum in Flint, where we will again be showcasing Marine City, and tickets to that event are on sale for $7 for adults, $6 for seniors, $5 for children, and under $2... and under $2 or $3. Anything else?
That's pretty good. You want to add anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention, again, when he was reading off, the Titanic International Society is a group, it's very well-known throughout the entire world. And we have their support. And 2018, we were hoping to be able to have some type of convention come here, but of course, we're not even near ready for that. So it goes of three years to hopefully get the hotel built. And then, you know, to get things in order here in case they do agree to come here, which they haven't done, and I don't think they've ever come this way. And I can't promise that they will. But just in case they would want to come here. Then we can also partner with different communities. Hopefully, the St. Clair Inn will have, you know, the person about that will have that ready and then the additional lodging there. And then we can partner as far as Port Huron because...
Because you're looking at bringing about 200, 300 people into town.
Two to 300 people, you know, for the convention. So if we have the convention, we may, you know, need the Marine City conference, what is that? Banquet center. Yeah, we may need it for that.
And if we need extra room, I know, Dave, you've got rooms out at your place. Put them out on the farm.
And today, we actually, we met with Diane Johns and her mother, who are actually the niece and the great-niece of Bert Johns, who was on the Titanic. And he survived. And he was going to Port Huron. And he had a tavern there called Bert's Tavern. So we kind of spoke with them today. And hopefully, they're going to be coming down to Marine City. And they haven't been here in a long time. So, you know, it's little by little things that bring tourism and people to Marine City and make us great. And then actually, it was really funny because there was a couple behind us. They overheard us talking. And actually, the owner of the atrium, Rock, he said, "Well, here's some Titanic people right here who are speaking about us." So they took our card and they're going to come down to Marine City and maybe have lunch and then go to the Mariner. So it's, you know, we're getting close to getting enough money to at least buy the memorial. And we're waiting on the community foundation.
Community foundation meets on our grant.
The night.
Yeah, a week from today.
So we'll hopefully, we'll know if they're going to give us what we're asking for there. And by going to the Sloan Museum and doing a lecture there, that's huge because that is a traveling Titanic exhibit that goes throughout the United States. And for us to be asked to be a part of that, that was really, really honorable, you know? We're amongst a lot of big-name peoples in the Titanic world that's going to be speaking. So anyways, and we also have a lady coming in from Washington State. And she's going to come to Marine City, too, and have lunch and see where it's going.
She wants to see some Titanic model that's in some building downtown.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I mean, it's, you know, just small things that we're doing, but it's starting to come around and...
So April 1st.
Yes.
I know, but this is not April Fools.
Yeah.
We have a fundraiser at the Mariner.
Right.
And it's for $25. And then you'll see the Night to Remember and enjoy yourself the evening.
Right.
All right?
And...
As a fundraiser. Thank you.
They're gone. Questions?
If we sell out on that, are we going to do a repeat on the 15th?
Or no, on the 2nd.
Okay, yeah. So if we have to sell out...
Some other day in the future.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Which, if we did that on the 15th, it would be the actual date.
What time, 7 o'clock? 7 o'clock? 7 o'clock? 6 o'clock? 6 or 7?
6, 6, 6.
6, 6, 6.
6. That's not a good number. Anyways...
Oh, yeah, appetizers, the movie will be at 7.
Anyways, thank you for, do you have any questions? Yes, Dave.
I just want to thank you guys. It's a, you know, a prime example of what Mr. Signery and others, many others have said, that, you know, you guys are taking something you're personally very passionate about and being wonderful goodwill ambassadors for our city and finding a way to get something that's important to you funded and seeming to be having a great time while doing it. So I just want to, you know, thank you for doing that and being a wonderful ambassadors in your own way for the city.
Oh, thank you.
I know it's a lot of time and effort to do something like that. And I'm sure I don't even know half the hours that you guys, hours and days and weeks you have to do it.
It's going to be great to just to bring just more people into town.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
All right. Next, we're going to have to move on to the Inon Water Street Loan and Financial Guarantee Agreement. Can we touch on that, for...
At the last meeting, there was discussion about increasing the allowance on the loan amount and to revisit the guarantee that was in place. So as requested, I drafted an indemnity agreement and a guarantee that would supplant and supersede the prior guarantee and reflect the allowance up to the $280,000 that was suggested. I know that this indemnity agreement and guarantee was submitted in and I believe it was presented to the owners of the hotel. I'm not sure. I was expecting to hear from their attorney or from them. I have not heard anything.
So we don't know if they're even going to sign this at this time?
We, we do not know. I would just call your attention to paragraph 3, which I think is instructive. What we're trying to do here is go beyond the guarantee and create an indemnity relationship, which I think is legally sound, where the owners, the hotel owners would agree to indemnify and hold the city harmless from and against any obligations whatsoever to repay the DEQ loan, including any principal payments, any interest payments, and any administrative fees or costs. That goes beyond the guarantee language and creates an indemnity relationship between the parties where if you're in any way approached by any entity under any scenario to in any way have to repay that loan, it's guaranteed by them and you're indemnified and held harmless. It's a little, I think, stronger, but more legally appropriate.
Mr. Davis, this obviously was, you weren't with the city quite yet when we originally entered into the first agreement. So it's the first chance you've had to put eyes on this and the updated agreement that you've provided us. Based on the new information, new agreement you've provided, do you have any additional concerns in regards to the personal guarantee portion as far, in respects to liability to the city? You feel that this strongly covers us, heaven forbid, the worst-case scenario should happen?
Yeah, it's, I mean, the only, the only other step you could take is you could record a lien against the property. That would be your only next, that would be the next step.
And is that something we would have to do now? Or can we do in case of forfeiture or them failing to honor their...
The trouble with leaning the property during this, this stage is it wrecks all of the, the, probably the construction, all the things they have going with banks and lending institutions. If you were going to do that, you'd want the project to be completed and then have a lien to secure this, this potential money. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, you're asking what would be the next, that would be the next step. The other step taken here is that the three relevant documents, Exhibits 1, 2, and 3, are incorporated by reference into this document. So you have the DEQ contract, you have the DEQ loan, and you have the scope of the project. And I think that was missing in the prior agreement. So procedurally, I think where we left it at the last meeting was you approved the increase subject to this document being in place. We provided this document to the hotel owners and have had no response.
So at this time, I don't know if we have enough information to even pass, to pass this without them agreeing that they're going to agree to it.
I think this could show up as unfinished business at a next meeting, you know, with hopes that they could be here to, or that we've had correspondence.
Well, I think it's, I think it's in their best interest to get this done.
Certainly, we would want to hear back from them, you know? Give them some... Well, it wouldn't be tabled, it would just show up as new business, correct?
Yeah, and the purpose of you getting it was to make sure you were...
Yeah, but I mean, we don't, it doesn't require a motion, it shows up as unfinished business.
We'll just move on then. Another one for attorney. We've got rules and procedures for the Marine City Commission.
I know you received a new version. I know there are minor changes. The one area that you asked me to contribute has been drafted, as I told the mayor, if you have enough time, you can write something short. And I tried to capture in this one paragraph the concerns raised and the thought processes that I detected from you at the last meeting. What we're essentially saying is that we do recognize there are, you know, there's the city commission and there are subordinate boards, that nothing should prevent any of you from going to those boards where there's non-applicant items on their agenda and you want to talk about things. But if there is going to be an applicant before that board and you have something to say on that issue, let's follow the procedure of using the clerk or the liaison to get those materials in front of that board. That would be our policy as written. And I, Rebecca, I think it kind of, it doesn't go, I know fully where you may want it to be, but I think it gives a strong inroad.
I think that this is exactly what...
Well, then I'll say that. I think this is exactly what you want.
From here on, it gets into an ethical area where we each have to say, you know, "Why am I here and why am I doing this?"
Yeah.
And you can't legislate that. It's also very important that we used to have 13 and now we'll have 14.
There you go. Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. And I agree with your concept that, you know, when you're writing these things, I, you know, I can't, I can't craft things that control behavior. You know, it's like, can you prevent crime?
But this gives us the guidelines, you know, this is...
Okay, well, I'm glad that it...
I was very, and I like short.
Okay. Well, I think we're good then. What did you think? Because you were...
Well, I know it was aimed to meet the start with, but I think what you wrote is...
I did not have you in...
No, 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 not yours, the other comments. I think what you wrote was very appropriate because it still allows us to still go on other matters and go to the board. So this whole thing of you can't go and talk to the board and getting stopped, which was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, this solves it.
Okay, great.
So I'm good with it.
Great.
I would move to accept the amendments to our rules of procedure for the Marine City Commission as presented.
Support.
Roll call vote?
Comments?
Go.
It was nice to have this all printed out. And C., I would like to take the time to read a little bit out of item 6, Decorum in Order. Each, and this refers to us. "Each person desiring to speak shall wait to be recognized by the presiding officer and then address all remarks to the presiding officer. Commissioners shall combine remarks to the question under debate." So it's just, we've gotten a little sloppy with this free-for-all for things. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments or concern?
Not only did we add a section 14, there was slight changes made to item 9, which is like an order of business, which is really the order that anyone picks up an agenda receives. So just because we are approving other changes that haven't been discussed. We sort of took out things that appear a bit outdated in other places, like bid openings used to be a section J that appears elsewhere. Item P used to be other business. So we just sort of reorganized the bullet points that we use to create our agenda, you know? Call of order is always first and there's always a flow of how we do that. So just, so people are aware that that's not the only change that we had. Just, you know, it's subtle, but just so we're aware, it's more than just item 14 that we've changed.
Anyone else? Hearing none, how about roll call vote?
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
All right, now, we're going to move down to discussion of 823 Brown's, Brew Street. This is a piece of property the city has received back from the county due to tax collection, wasn't it, Chris? Foreclosure. And the, our city inspector and code enforcer went through it and really said it's in extremely bad shape. It's, it's not fit for, for anyone, for occupancy anymore. So she did only get so far one quote for demo on it from TK and Associates. And she's still working on more, but she wanted to bring it to our attention to see how she, we would like her to proceed with it.
I talked to her again. She said she's just looking for okay to go forward with the bidding process.
Yeah, I met with, I met with her as well. So you're aware, and I gave her a bid format for a very similar demolition scope. And she was grateful for that.
I had conversations with the city manager and Susan as well. The email, when the city manager first indicated that we received this property because it didn't sell at the auction, before looking at it, I thought it could potentially be something we might want to work with Habitat for Humanity to, order to reoccupy. And Susan, her first thing was, "No way, no how." And then she explained why. And just so folks following along at home know, the failing foundation, failing trusses, you know, if there's any abatement that needs to be done, they wouldn't even recommend that happening there because it's in such a dire straits, which is probably why it didn't sell and fell in to begin with. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty bad thing. So, you know, I would certainly, it certainly seems like it would be the appropriate thing to do is to secure that property. And it seems like the best way to do that, and the most responsible way would be to, you know, go through with, you know, getting quotes and seeing through on demolition.
So will we need a motion on this to go ahead and get quotes or to instruct the...
Just consent as a board, is that correct?
Yeah, just, we'll just do it.
Okay.
Well, if it's that bad, you don't have to get the EPA study. You can just do it as a emergency demolition...
Emergency demolition.
Yeah, we were going to try to do it as an ordered demolition. And it is pretty bad. Some of the demo companies don't even want to go in it. So...
I know Swan was just looking through the windows.
Yeah, I didn't want to go in.
All right, so then we'll move on to the next item then. We're all set with that one. Pavilion rental, beach pavilion rental application and procedures is what we're looking for right now. Can we get a motion to at least discuss it or take, I actually looked through it and it looks pretty decent, but let's see if we need to...
For conversation purposes, I would make a motion to approve the beach pavilion rental application document that we have in front of us.
Support.
Questions and concerns?
All right, I guess I'll start. I had provided Elaine with a bunch of other ones from other communities. And I was kind of, I see she scavenged quite a bit of this from these. But I think there's some other issues that we got to take into consideration just to address everything. And this, by the looks of, this only is the beach, does nothing to do with any of the other pavilion over at King Road. Beach only, okay. I didn't see anything, unless I missed it here, about a security deposit. Some of them require that for cleaning to make sure it's done properly. I think we ought to attach a copy of the park rules because some of that is under, under there. You know, saying, "Go to the rules," but they're not attached. There's an issue with the resident stat, says a resident is an individual who pays their taxes to the city in Marine City. Well, what about renters and others? So I think that's another issue. In fact, one of them, just what they did was they had you give a photo ID with the current address to show that you lived here. So I'm trying to think what else I had here. Let's see. I don't have any other ones. I was trying to scavenge anything I could find here. Oh, I know what the other one was, liquor. Now, I know our ordinance for the park says no liquor, but when we have the maritime days or we had festivals, we allowed that in there with the proper permits. So I think if you're going to do this and people are going to use it for weddings and certain things, you know darn well, that issue's going to come up. So I think that also needs, there was a section in one of these on dealing with that. I think it was Chesterfield Township. They had a pretty good one here. And they covered it all with insurance and different things. Even if somebody wanted to bring in a bounce house or a disc jockey or anything else, they covered all that in their permit.
In the rules part of the permit?
Yeah.
Instead of on the, not on the beach application, but on the permit?
Yeah, they have this whole thing, this page, this page. They have a lot of rules to their things. But I think if we're going to do this, we want to cover it all at once, as much as we can. So I guess I would ask that she reevaluate some of those issues. So I guess I would ask that she reevaluate, reevaluate some of those issues.
Is enforcement going to be added?
Hold on, Bill.
I think that those are very good comments to bring up and definitely worth looking at. Thank you.
I just want to know who's going to enforce it, the police department or the co-enforcement officer?
That's another good question because we don't have funding to do it really either way as in, I mean, they can just check and see if it's clean, but to actually have, we'd have to have, leave it up to the officer or?
Well, that's why I said, there's a lot more little, little things that need to be ironed out.
Neonances?
Yeah, I think because of the type of events that you're going to, people are going to want to have there, so.
Before there should be major rentals needed, we can look at this again to make sure that these points are added. Those are all good points.
I would suggest that if anybody wants to, take a look at Chesterfield. You can go right online and get this one. It's the Chesterfield Township for Pavilions and stuff. It's very detailed. They really covered everything.
And I'd agree, it's a good starting point. I know when I, managing the Performing Arts Center, when we first came about our rental agreement that I brought to the district, which is now, this major portion that I developed for that is our document for the whole district, but mine's like a four-page agreement that exactly does that, lists everything you're not allowed to have. But it's in clear black and white, plain language, and we require like initially in of each pages and every year I, you know, even if it's same renter every year, they've got to look at that document. And my board visits all the documents each year. And I, I think that's always been, the few times I've had issues with rental groups, it's always been very helpful to go back to that and I am able to, you know, list out those expectations. And so I, I would agree with what's been said so far. I think we want to put in there something about enforcement and certainly the acquiring of some sort of a deposit and how we want to administer, you know, who inspects that to make sure they get that deposit back and those types of things. So I think it's a good start, but I, you know, since alcohol was brought up, I just want to remind people that the festivals don't just randomly have that. They have to qualify for the liquor license and part of doing that, I remember in the days when doing the music festival, we had a fence in every square foot of that and, you know, that was required of us.
And insurance.
So, yeah, it, yeah, and the big time insurance, that, you know, that affected that substantially. So someone can't just do that, you know, there would be much more to it, you know, and would have to be approved by the state. Marine City couldn't even approve that. So as far as that's concerned, you know, we indicate that already that no alcohol is to be used, but I would definitely like to see a few more requirements, specifically the, the cleaning and that sort of thing.
Would each member like to send an email to the city manager on some of the bullet points that they'd like to see added to it? Maybe table this for a, for two weeks and then come, see what she comes back with and see if she can cover these areas of concerns we want to add to? Go ahead, Bill.
I would say I had a question that, that's just for the pavilion.
Right.
What about the bathrooms? You are a large group, you have bathrooms there. Are we going to require them to clean it?
It does already say that the bathrooms are excluded from that because they're public restrooms, so it's specifically just the pavilion, not restrooms. It already indicates that.
So what's the pleasure of the group? Would they like to?
Make a motion to table?
Make a motion, or we got a ta, we got a motion.
You don't have to make a motion to table, you just show up as unfinished business. I like the thought of individuals emailing their concerns.
Yeah, just put something together for the city manager and pass it on.
Is there any discussion at all about a name for this? Are we just going to call it the beach pavilion or? And I did have some questions.
I don't know that we've had discussion. I mean, certainly when someone goes to the extent of, not that we want to probably get too much into that because what's on topic is the application, but certainly when someone gives you something large like that, typically a name and opportunity would potentially be appropriate there.
When you have the ribbon cutting, I would think you'd want to consider it right before that.
Yeah, I think, you know.
I also think they would run into a lot of trouble if you tried to include liquor. Chesterfield Township might have a different setup.
Will they require rules and permits and insurance?
The state has to prove that, we cannot. We don't have the authority to do that.
And you also, also if you're going to have liquor in there, then you're going to have additional police. So, I mean, it's, there's all kinds of.
But we don't have the authority to even do that, nor do I think we want to.
No, we don't want to touch it.
I did have one question too. A person asked me, since it was donated, why do we have to pay anything? And where does that money go?
It's going to be for the upkeep of the structure.
Is there a line item? Is that going to be something we'll cover in budgets?
Yes, we can.
We can, but it, we still have to maintain that property. And we have to cut the grass and, you know, there's a, and there's.
Roof.
Garbage, pick up.
And there's a certain amount of administration of, yeah, of just the filling out, processing the application and whatever.
But it will be tracked.
Yes.
It's not just going into the black hole. Thank you.
Commissioner Avery.
Mr. Avery.
It is good that there will be an account for that. And I think the naming of the building would be a small thing to do for the gratitude we should show for this donation.
I think it can be done, like Lisa said, closer later on when we're finished with it and.
It shouldn't be real hard to figure out a name for it.
Shouldn't be too tough. So we're just going to table this motion then for future?
Just leave it be.
Okay. Next, we're going to have discussion on soil borings. Yes, Mr. Ittrich? I'm not even touching this one. This one's all yours.
Come man's claim this day.
We should have more for you tonight. I've been trying to put the bit together to do the job over there. As you know, that manhole sunk one foot. That's the problem we're having. If you look at the soil conditions on the second page, waters, they started water roughly seven feet down. Our sewer line's almost 14 foot down. So we're going to have to have it all dewatered before they even start construction and we put, repair in the sewer. The, if you notice that there, there's Portland cement 10 feet down, they mix that with the sand as their backfill and try to keep the ground stable so this doesn't happen. But apparently when they put this in, they didn't put it down far enough before they constructed the manhole. So that's part of the reason why the manhole's sinking also. So I guess the next step is, you know, we're going to get bids on this and go from there.
So how much of the street are you talking, you think?
Well, if we dewater it, we'll probably only have a hole maybe 10 foot across.
What's the duration of the dewatering going to take?
Probably about two weeks.
That's with external pumps running?
Yep. They'll drill holes, put wellheads in and pump it. They'll probably go down about 18 feet, 19 feet. So they have plenty of dry soil to work with.
So we're going to have to shut down that area of the road or?
No, we got a storm sewer right there.
So you'll be able to dewater it just from?
Right there.
Through the green belt net?
The only time we're going to have to shut down Mary Street is when they start construction. We're going to have to pump from a manhole basically up by Mabel Street all the way down past Holland. So that section of the road will be shut down for while they're working on it.
Mike, does this have any effect or could it potentially have any effect on operation of the Washington Life Center?
Yes, it does. And I've already talked to them and they were.
Communication, that's all I was looking for.
Communication with them and we're part of the.
Programs and a lot of people relying on them for services. I just want to make sure that.
And all times, there will be something open so they can get in that, in and out of that driveway. If they have to make a temporary one out of road mix or something next door or something, but at all times, there will be something there.
This is not a sinkhole.
No, this is not a sinkhole.
Oh, you get interesting questions, you know, I figured this has.
No, we're not going to, we're not going to swallow.
Not going to have more than I have.
Well, I think it's an important opportunity to show that, you know, I'm glad we're doing this due diligence and we're taking care of these problems before they become, you know. Recent time has showed us how, how quickly not taking care of infrastructure or even thinking that you take care of it, you know, can cause a huge, huge problem for a very large area. And so I'm glad that we're addressing these things what now, so.
This has been going on for 10 years. And it's finally that point where we need to do something about it, so.
But I appreciate that we're being proactive and not letting go.
Okay, so that was just an update for now and you haven't gotten any?
The engineers are working on the bid specs right now. Just hoping they happen tonight, but maybe tomorrow, I'll have.
Okay. Now, you're not done.
Yeah, you got to stay.
Yeah, you got to stay. You know this was coming. We put them all together for you.
I know, right? All three of them, didn't you?
Yes, I did. I mean, yes, we did. Okay, we got to talk about the ice rink updates.
Um, we've talked about this. The weather has been very, um.
It's terrible, right?
It's been terrible. Next week again, it's supposed to be up in the 40s again. We talked about putting a temporary one up for now, but it's just a couple of weeks and a half left. Is it going to be worth it?
Mike and I met this week. Because I offered some of the assistance from Maple Landscaping because I could talk them into volunteering, telling them to come and help, but with this weather and it's just, it's not going to be feasible.
Yep.
I mean, go ahead.
Mike, can you clarify, when you last came to us about the ice rink, you'd indicated the wonderful donation on Water Street, but you, you thought that you were almost there about one in front of the DPW. Did that ever come to fruition 100% or we, can you offer any update on that?
I'm thinking that there's going to be one there next year.
Okay.
Okay, whether it's.
Still working on it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I do want to comment because I was, I wasn't under the impression that the refrigerant would cost so much.
Yeah.
At $47,000.
Starting at 47 for just.
And I thought that was a little steep and we may have to just rely on Mother Nature for an ice rink.
And the average, the average electric bill for running those machines averaged about $3 to $3.50 a month.
Yeah, no, that's not in the budget.
No.
But we'll, like I said, the offer's still out there for helping to assemble that, you know, if, if we can find some, you know, funds for it to buy it, we can still use volunteers to put it together and assemble it. And I know your crews have already spoke up his interest to help us out.
Oh, yeah. I got, I got a ton of people that's willing to step up and make this happen, so.
We do apologize we couldn't get it done this year because it was on our.
It was on our radar.
It was on my, I really wanted to get it done bad.
It was. And we've tried, we really did.
If we need that polar vortex back, but our heating bills are low, so I don't know.
Okay, do you want me to stay up for the next one too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say yeah.
So we're good on the, everybody good on the ice rink updates? Any more concerns or questions?
We're safe.
And again, I feel bad about this one because I really pushed for this one. I wanted this one bad.
Mother Nature's fault.
She was ready to come down and play hockey.
All right. I have a resolution number 007-2017 right-of-way permits for MDOT.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number 007-2017 in regards to the right-of-way permits for Michigan Department of Transportation.
Support.
Any questions or concerns? Mr. Avery.
Having read through it twice, I'm going to ask, what is it really? I mean, is it just to give us permission to paint lines on the street or do simple?
No, I, every year I fulfill a permit for MDOT so I can repair a water main on M29 or, that's the resolution they need from you to allow me to do it. That's all that is. Gives me the right to work in the MDOT right-of-way.
It looked bureaucratic enough to be.
Yeah.
Government business, you know.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
All right, now we have the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget schedule. Need a motion to approve or discuss.
I'd make a motion that we approve the schedule as shown, obviously subject to any changes that may come up during this period, but.
I need a second.
Support.
Second. Discussion. Anybody got any comments? Lisa.
Yeah, all right. The schedule for when we get the book has only given us a couple of days to go through the budget. Normally, they try to get it to us a week before because there's a lot to go through. So I'm not real good with this. It comes in on April 20th and our first meeting's the 25th. So I'd like to see us get that a little sooner. And then as far as the budget meetings themselves, every year we do three days in a row. We do this marathon grueling, going through the budget line by line. And then usually I think everybody's just trying to get out of there by the end of the second day. I'd like to see us, since we have some new people in that on the board, that we have a day, even if we use last year's budget, to try to give everybody an overview of the lines, what they're for, the accounts, just to get everybody familiar with it so then when they get this budget, they'll have a better idea of what they're looking at. Because we do this every year and everybody here knows how grueling it is the way we do it. So I'm just looking to see if we can't change it up a little bit.
Yes, Dave.
Yeah, I, I've been following the budget workshops not only for my participation, but when, you know, three or four years in advance, I was one of the few people that actually showed up. And the first year I didn't have the booklet, second year I paid to get the booklet printed. And I would agree, it's a lot of line by line, but since there's likely not a lot of substantive changes, you know, we haven't accrued hundreds of millions of dollars, nor have we expended hundreds of million of dollars. So it's going to be pretty close to the, our known conditions of the budget. And I think a thought to simplify the initial discussion so we can get to the sort of crux of the matter and working through the details sooner, I think there's, there's a lot of merit to that. You know, I think to start with the budget overviews, our treasurer's always giving us the line-by-line breakdown, but behind each account, there's always bullet points of the major changes and, and notes on that. So perhaps a starting point might be each account, we start with the bullet points and then if necessary, we can go back in line by line by line. But if we can start the initial presentation as a summary, I've done that in other places that I've worked on, that always seems, seems well that we, we have the absolute detail should we need it, but you can kind of get to the, the actual getting our hands dirty and working and, you know, chatting about that as opposed to, like you said, the line. You know, I think that could be very productive.
Yeah, well, we do two nights of line by line and by the time we're done.
I agree.
So what's this, what, what would you like to do date-wise then to change to the?
Well, I'd like to have the budget leased by the 17th anyway.
Um.
Well, that's Easter Monday.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we back it up, we're into Holy Week and 17th being the day after Easter. And that is the week after Easter when a lot of people are going to, it's one of these things, you know, no matter how you dress it up, it's still spinach. And we all dedicate, and I'm certainly willing to ask for help if I have any problems as I go through that. I don't know, there's no magic time, no magic date.
I see here that on the, on the 11th, it says budget draft submitted to city manager. Maybe we could get a copy or advanced look at the draft so we have some, I mean.
I'm telling you because there's a lot to go through. And there's a lot of calculations that you want to sit and do and look at to see what they've done with it. And a couple of days is just not enough time, especially with some of us work, some of us don't, you're retired, but I know you still got another job besides that. But there's a lot to go through to have to try to do this and that short amount of time. But there's a lot to go through to have to try to do this and that short amount of time. So...
So what's the pleasure of the board, then?
I'd like to get the draft on the 11th, like you're suggesting. It's just a draft.
Subject to approval to city manager, because we're speaking for her, dealing with her department.
But we can do that, we're her boss. I'm good with that. I hope so.
You know what happens when you're not at a meeting.
Yeah. She's gonna be volunteered for a lot of things.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think that's a very reasonable way of getting some of the information disseminated and, um, kinda get a quick look at it and...
I think the, the workshop dates seem to be a good location for those, provided that we can...
We get the information.
Get the preview materials there, so... And for folks that are following along at home, um, that like to maybe track those things, although we're not approving it yet, the budget workshop tentative dates look to be April 25th, 26th, and 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here, um, at the Fire Hall, where we have our normal meetings.
So is everybody in agreement, then, with moving, requesting the, um, a tentative draft on the 11th, so we can start going through it? And then, but approve the rest of the budget meetings as...
I just, if, if possible, you know...
Well, it's everything's possible.
Yeah. Well...
We're not gonna ask the impossible. Oh, darn.
No. No, no, no.
April.
You're good. Yeah, you're good. It's not, it's not putting yours ahead.
So how are we gonna handle the three days, then? We're still gonna do the grueling marathon?
What's, what would you suggest?
Well, I still like this, you know, I, I don't... Some of us have been through it, some of us haven't, and the people that haven't are gonna have questions on the accounts.
Well, I think that would be, in my mind, appropriate to do in the time between when they get it and when we start to talk about it, is if you feel you need the more time to come up to speed, just like any other agenda item that we have. That's why you have that research time. So I think it would be appropriate to, you know, schedule a meeting with the city manager and, you know, whoever else has been to, to understand that.
I don't think the treasurer will probably have time to do too much of that's...
The comments by the public, that's done first all the time, they don't, they can't make any comments.
At each budget workshop meeting, it is, it is an open meeting, and so just like we have a roll call and all that type of stuff, they still have their five minutes to discuss that, you know, the public comment is at each day. So each day that we have a budget workshop, all three days, they would have an opportunity to make public comment.
And a draft copy has to be made available to them, so they can review it, too. So the public needs time to try to absorb some of this, too, before these meetings.
So, we're gonna ask for the draft by the 11th, correct? Okay. And then, any questions or concerns for that, directed to the city manager? If we have any concerns before the first tentative meeting, then, that we're discussing, or...
That's what I've heard.
But still leave the workshop dates the same, or are we going to, are you gonna...
We usually only use two of out of the three, but we have a third one there in case we need it. I don't think we've ever used the third one in a long time.
Yeah, we've used the third one last year, I thought.
Uh-uh.
It's good to have it on the, I know with my personal work schedule, I'd always rather block out that time than have to find a way to create more time and then schedule it last minute. So it's always good to have it and not need it. I think that's appropriate.
So have we got everything hammered out that we, that everyone would like to see?
Yep.
I'm just gonna enjoy...
Do we need a motion to direct the city manager?
Yeah, I think we do.
I would make a motion to direct the city manager.
Do you have one on open?
Yeah.
Yes, we already have one open.
But I would still approve this.
Do you wanna just amend this?
It was not my motion.
Could you amend your motion, then?
Yes. I will amend the motion to accept the budget schedule, to request the city manager to have the draft submitted to the council, the commission, on the 11th, so that we can begin researching.
And we have the same second?
Sure.
Okay. And that is a regular vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Um, next we have the server quotes. And the one part, you don't want me to talk about is computers, and I get, she's on vacation, or on seminar today. She's got two quotes from our current, one from our current, um, IT department, or group, and then the one that will be coming onboard in April. So, and she has two different quotes. And, uh, one is considerably lower, and one was, she actually recommended, um, the one from High Tech. So...
I would move to, um, accept the quote and approve the expenditure of, uh, from High Tech Services in the amount of $15,569.13 for the replacement server.
But I gotta waive, waive committative bids first. I was gonna, I actually read my notes on that one. Two roll call votes. Can I get a, um...
I'll make a motion to waive the bidding for the purchase of the High Tech server.
Support.
Any other discussions involving the High Tech server?
I, I'd just like to, um, Chris, you use this. What do you think? You're gonna be using this stuff. Uh, High Tech, is that... Your, your police, yeah, 'cause I know there has been some problems in the past.
And I am pretty comfortable speaking about technology, and it's one of those things where you, you, you go with the person that you're now entrusting with sort of the, I call it the keys to the city, you know. We've, we've given them all this, um, authority to overlook our, you know, all of our digital files, which includes a lot of financial information. So it certainly makes a lot of sense, not only are they the lower bidder, but it certainly makes a lot of sense to go with your provider, because they could have much more intimate knowledge. They're specing equipment that they're very comfortable working with, so all those synergies, you know, tend to play well together, as opposed to buying something and says, here, now work with it. That doesn't seem like a, a smart thing, but in this case, it's substantially cheaper, too. Buy about a $4,000 ballpark figure. So I think it's, uh, when nowadays, there are more things that are digital, and we're going more paperless, and the state's requiring more paperless things. So things like servers and data storage and all these cloud services are gonna be increasingly important as we move forward in time. So, you know, it's good that we're making these purchases, although they're not cheap. It's, it's a smart thing, because it's protecting our, and our investment. Um, it's protecting our, our data and security. So these, these are important things.
Okay.
The bid proposal, were they all the same, because there's some notes on the other one saying multiple servers and single servers, but there's no notes on...
They, uh, they bid it to, SOY or...
SYO.
SYO, bid it two different ways.
High Tech says it's one sheet versus...
Yeah, and it was just, she actually, High Tech bid exactly what she was looking for.
You can have a server that does the same thing, one server does it all within one computer unit, one CPU with a set of hard drives. There's another approach that you can have it amongst many different machines, or like, they call it like a blade server with many different compartments. So it'd be akin to maybe taking a backhoe and filling up 10 dump trucks with data, or taking a backhoe and filling one large dump truck with data. They both get the job done, but they just do it in a different way. So if you wanna maybe think of it that way, but they're both relieving and storing your data safely, securely, just different ways you might go about it.
I was just wondering about, on the server, it, it serves everybody, but each individual one has, are they gonna replace the computers at each desk?
No.
A server is, think of it as data storage. So if you click File, Save on your computer, that goes to one place, one of a few places. One could be the local hard drive, your local machine that you're working with, right there. But what this does is it's one centralized location, whether it be in the basement or these, we also store them offsite for safety reasons. So everyone has access to, you know, like, some people call it a cloud storage, you know, that stuff that you just can't see. So if ever there's something were to happen to the local machines, this is safely backed up elsewhere, which has a lot more security and a lot more storage capacity. So it's just, you, you're not storing on the physical unit, everyone's storing it on one big centralized location. That's very secure.
And then they just drop it into the machine with a drop...
Yeah.
Because I've been through that before in other units, and then all of a sudden you get the server, and you have to buy all new singles at the, at the unit. Okay.
We're a little, we're a little behind on the server change that needed to be done a little sooner, but due to financial constraints, we're getting it done now. Okay, any other questions or concerns on the waiving of the committative bids? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Luckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
All right, now I would like to get a motion to approve the, uh, quote.
I move to approve the, uh, High Tech purchase. Is that enough?
The amount.
The amount of $15,569.13.
Support.
Can I get, any questions or concerns on this one? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley?
Yes.
All right, I need, now we're down to financial business. I need a motion for disbursements, including payroll, for $270,516.37.
I make a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll, in the amount of $270,516.37.
Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
All right, since we don't have a city manager's report today, um, Mr. Davis, do you have anything for us today?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Privilege, Mr. Avery, you wanna start us out?
I have nothing to add to the meeting, thank you.
Uh, yes, I would just remind people that this is Black History Month, and there will be, uh, special events and so forth going on in the schools to help us understand some of our history. Also, a happy Groundhog Day, as a person who has been in Punxsutawney many times and held Punxsutawney Phil in my own two hands, biggest fattest groundhog you ever saw in your life. And by, by the way, this is Punxsutawney Phil number 16, I believe. Uh, and the whole family lives in a little glass house on the front of the library in Punxsutawney. I'd also like to thank the people for, especially Maggie and Dan Mykoff for the Titanic presentation. Not only was it informative, but I really liked the including of the personal stories. That, I really enjoyed that. I'd also like to thank Pam Binnsfield. Uh, I've had different people say they would have reworded this or that or the other thing, but to take all that information about the hotel site and put it in a readable format was quite a job, and I, uh, thank her for doing that. Uh, also, I just spent the last two days on updates for youth mental health and first aid to, uh, to the mental health of our youth. And we're just getting into having data on the effect of technology on mental health in our young people. And it is very sobering to see, uh, the statistics on it and the dangers of allowing young people to substitute, um, social interaction through the internet for face-to-face social interaction. And how if we allow our youth to be involved in technology useless, uh, usage to an extent where they are, that is their primary social interaction. Uh, it exacerbates all mental problems, it can cause depression, uh, it can lead eventually to suicide and developing a very negative outlook on events, because virtually, you're talking about people and not to people. And so there, and we gen, tender, tend to cluster up with only people that agree with us. And so you're gonna be getting a lot of directives, this is especially helpful to parents. I can remember even back in the Dark Ages, when I would come to the family table with a book, I was told, no, this is family time, this is face-to-face time, and how important that is for the development of young people. And, uh, again, watching our young people, not just knowing what they're doing, but how much time they're spending and how much time they do in face-to-face interaction and the actual discussion of issues. Also, uh, in looking up, uh, some of the history for our, looking forward to our sesquicentennial, um, a snapshot of Marine City in 1874. There was one school, four churches, no streetlights, no barber shop, and 21 saloons.
Got a few things. I also wanna extend my congratulations to Erin, elected volunteer of the year. Um, this is the first meeting that we have. They had the wonderful ceremony that happened concurrently while we hosted our last meeting. But, uh, you know, as mentioned before, tonight she, she came upon herself to host, uh, and receive funding for the life rings and just so many other things that people don't even realize. And, um, you know, I think oftentimes, as, as a city, we don't take time to recognize the people that are out there working hard that aren't doing it for the recognition. So I, you know, congratulations to her, she's, uh, you know, a wonderful asset to the city. And then there are many other people out there, so I'm glad that, uh, events are having, that we're hosting events to, to honor people that are just, you know, the, the worker bees behind the scenes and, and just great people to know as well. As Laura also indicated, the River Recting Zone Committee is, is still meeting and is still a productive group. Um, I don't know how that rumor got started. We met a couple of weeks back. We're on schedule to meet, uh, tomorrow as well. Kyle and the students involved in the project, we're working summer events over the summer, still doing those fundraisers, like car washes and things, and, you know, they're still just as active as ever. It's a big project, there's a lot of moving pieces, and just 'cause you don't hear about something doesn't mean, you know, things aren't going on behind the scenes. To do it right takes a lot of time and, and to pursue a lot of different avenues, so... And one final thing, I wanna thank the Marine City Police Department and their cooperation with the East China School District. You know, there was a potential incident that occurred with the, with a student not making great decisions at, at the high school, and, uh, they, um, they had wonderful response and wonderful work with the school district administration in keeping our students safe, very quickly, uh, dealing with the student and, um, you know, just making sure that, uh, the kids in our community are safe, that our people are safe. Um, and, and follow-through, you know, they're, they're still working on, uh, researched from a second incident and, and all these other things that, you know, they, they don't quite, they're not able to give us information on just yet. But, uh, you know, they've had wonderful follow-through that, once again, it showed that our first responders in our city are just wonderfully trained, um, and that the systems work when we need them to, and that's just a, it's a great thing, so, you know, just thankful to those guys for what they do.
Um, the other thing I have is, uh, the Lions Wild Game Dinner's coming up, February 27th. $25 a ticket. Um, we're gonna have a lot of raffles. We're gonna have deer, salmon, rabbit, duck, pheasant, caribou, lots of tasty vittles. So get your tickets, because they go quick, and, um, hope to see y'all there. That's it.
Um, I've got a few things. Uh, just to remind everybody, this Saturday night's Fireman's Ball. And, uh, self-serving a little bit on that one, 'cause I have to speak at that one, too. So anybody that would like to go, it's a, it's a very nice night. And I think, Lisa, you've been to the last 10, 12? I actually got signed up as a fireman that night. Yeah, it was called, I think that was Shanghai back in the day. But it was a, it's a very, it's a great night, and it's a great community night. I've got some, uh, I was accused of being against the, the inn. I've been accused of being, you know, not, you know, we're not pushing forward as much as we'd like to. Well, we're going to be coming to the board with a, a variation of the sidewalk proposal in the next probably four weeks, because we wanna put something together that will work, that you guys can pallet and pass, but that, also that the homeowners can afford. So we've got some different ideas. I've met with Mike this week, he's kind of tired of seeing me. Um, I'm, the lane's been out of town, so I've stopped by and are called every day this week, hasn't it? Oh, no, I, I'll still get permission to go and see ya. So, but we're gonna come to you with something, and I think it's going to work out. It'll be good, I hope. That's, I'm not quite as aggressive as Mr. Trump is in Washington, but I don't have that kind of money either, so... Um, but we're gonna get something put together for, to get this taken care of. And it's, it's gonna, it's been a work in progress, but we need to get something done. And like I said, we can't put it on the shoulders of these homeowners, so... Mike and I have sat down, and he shook his head a lot, no, and I shook my head a lot, yes, and it went back and forth. Uh, we also took care of a light issue, a concerned citizen let us know about, and... And that's things that we need to get done. If people see something, Mike's not usually around town in the dark too often, unless there's a problem, and then he's just looking straight at the problem, not at the light. So if we, if people see something, let us know, and so we can get things taken care of. So, and I do wanna get some more information on how this extending of this... So, and I do want to get some more information on how this extending of this, um, tax issue for the, um, hotels gonna work, 'cause I, I'm still, I can't get my, my hands around it on the duration of how long this is gonna take to pay back with, uh, some firm numbers, and that's the one thing I haven't been able to get out of anyone so far, Mary Lynn's been doing some work on trying to dig up how it's gonna work and actually pay this off, and, uh, with only twelve years of abatement, will that be enough time to get this paid off?
Well, there's two separate things.
Right.
There is a chart in S Y O.
But it's gotta be adjusted now with the new...
Yes, it does.
And that's, and hasn't been done, and I'm...
Nope.
I'm, hopefully, they may have used some of our fine attorney's advice on some of the mitigation, maybe that number will actually go down, so. Other than that, uh, I think I'm good, I'm not gonna speak too long.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.